Well, to call the meeting order for August 7th, 2024. What the cleavage?
Ladies and gentlemen, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I make motion we go to Executive Session Title 4056E, Consult with Legal Counselors.
Second.
All in favor? Do you want your motion?
I move that we come out of Executive Session 4056E.
602.
602 PM.
All in favor? Okay, no decisions. Uh, Horton Bills.
Sign.
Uh, through the agenda?
We can move to the agenda. Second.
Minutes of last meeting.
I've not seen it.
I guess we'll table that till next week. Oh, next week. Okay. I'm gonna share a weekly update.
Um, just a couple of things for you tonight. Um, first is to let you know that we do have a letter from the church. It's been delivered. Um, it says that the proposal has been reviewed by the Acting Congressional Church Council and Executive Committee, and they approve unanimously. The, um, work that's to be done there, they recognize the monuments are partially on church property, and we authorize the town and its contractors, um, basically to make alterations as they see fit. So, sign and hand deliver.
So, uh, you and I, one of us, contact them.
What next?
See if we can get a start date.
Okay. Hi, next, an individual, uh, representative from Southern Maine Agency on Aging stopped in. She just wanted to leave some updated brochures for the board. She wants to put, um, forward out to the residents and anybody that, um, might be elderly that needs some at-home services or meals on wheels, adult day programs, they have lots of things to offer, and they're really hoping to get more involved in Acton. So, if anybody's interested, um, they can come into the office where she left the brochures. Uh, lastly is the monthly Sheriff's Department for July, since it's the first of the month. Uh, first event on July 2nd is, um, they're looking for an individual from New Durham, New Hampshire that is suspected of a failure to stop incident on Milton Mills Road. Uh, he fled the scene and so far haven't been able to locate him. On July 6th, they arrested an individual aged 32 from Chapley on a warrant of theft. July 8th, a couple deputies responded to a home on Widge Lane for a violation of protection order. Individual from Burke was arrested after trying to gain access to the home. July 11th, Sam Warren summons a 23-year-old from Acton for operating an unregistered motorcycle in Acton. July 11th, Deputy Sam Warren took a scam complaint from Log Cabin Lane in Chapley. Uh, the suspects were able to convince an elderly victim to give them access to her computer, send them copies of her driver's license, credit cards, and line gift cards for, for them. July 11th, a deputy attempted to stop a 16-year-old from Chapley who had been operating at 80 miles an hour on Emory Mills Road. By the time the deputy turned around and attempted, the juvenile had crashed by trying to negotiate a turn. Uh, the subject struck two parked cars and, in a driveway, um, and looked like, uh, he was summoned for criminal, summoned over 30 miles an hour driving to endanger. Same day, July 11th, fourth event. The deputies responded to Newfield Road in Chapley for a report of a truck off the road in the woods. Uh, with airbag deployment, individual 56-years-old from Chapley went off the road at the intersection. He was uninjured and stated he swerved to avoid a deer. Here, he actually failed to negotiate and was intoxicated and then arrested on OUI. July 16th, Deputy Sam Warren arrested, uh, responded to a home on Alice Ness Road in Chapley for a suicidal male, 64-year-old. Emailed a friend that he had just taken, um, 1,200 units of insulin as a means of suicide. They did arrive, find him unresponsive, not breathing. July 17th, Sam Warren and Chavette responded to a home on Flat Ground Road for a suicide in Acton. July 18th, Sam Warren investigated a theft from a home on Raccoon Road in Acton. Victim reported that he was the painting contractor and all of his stuff was stolen. 23rd of July, deputies and sergeant responded to a home on Hopper Road where they attempted to locate an individual for an active Class C warrant. They were later arrested, uh, later on the day. July 31st, deputy attempted to stop a vehicle on Moore Road in Chapley for a defect. The operator refused stop, fled the scene down Ross Corner. After pulling into the driveway, the operator ran from the vehicle after a foot pursuit. The 35-year-old from Buxton was taken into custody and arrested on several outstanding warrants. Busy month.
I love it. 75 and running.
Yeah, something fun.
I don't mean to make light of it, but it is, you know.
They did catch it, so don't get any ideas. That's all I have to say.
Okay, how is our date though?
Um, Warren Finance, still has not met. You wouldn't expect him to this time of day. Nothing really on the finances, other than the auditors are doing the work. Jennifer and, uh, Lauren have been working hard on getting all the material requested together. I think that's pretty much done now, isn't it?
Almost.
And, um, I had an opportunity to meet with the candidate for the APAD Director position, and we're gonna talk about that later. Uh, that's all that I have.
Ed?
Transfer station, really nothing, nothing new up there. Mary Grant, nothing there. Animal controls, movement forward with learning the job. The only other thing I want to bring up, I guess I can bring it up under here. Last week, we had talked about looking into police departments and things of that nature. I do have a meeting set up Tuesday with the local police department. We talked to the chief about what it would take to do something like that. I'd like to take another member of the board with me. I'd like to take John with me, if the board's okay with that.
We will look.
I'm fine. I just wanted to make sure. I think two, two sets of ears is better than one. So, okay.
Awesome.
That's all I got.
Dave? Um, nothing from the fire department. I know we're starting some conversations and feedback that I got from the fire chief for the Recreation Committee. I've been feeling questions about the open position. I know we're gonna talk about that later. Um, and still looking for members to join the Recreation Committee. Um, reach out to either myself or the town administration to let us know if you're interested. Um, for the Conservation Forest Committee, we had a meeting last night, and the chair's here to talk about some of the, um, things that were done at that meeting, so I won't take away from his report.
Okay, Joel?
Um, I got nothing for the school department or the planning board. Um, but yesterday, Jennifer and I got an email from Steve Perro wanting to know if we could get the town cemeteries on the tax map. Jennifer was gonna look into, um, the local catographers that we use to see if we can get that added to our areas.
Yeah, so essentially, it's just a layer of the cartographic map, we plot them out. So, um, I should have a price for it by next week. I'm gonna kind of talk to the planner with you tomorrow.
How many town cemeteries do you have?
Well, I think they're looking for all cemeteries, not just town.
Not just town? Okay, if you guys wonder.
There's a bunch of them.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, uh, John? Y'all set?
Yeah.
In roads, uh, nothing in medical grounds. We're gonna be meeting with some engineers tonight, I don't believe.
Yeah, but I, I think last week, um, we kind of gave Tom the lead to, um, looking, I'll look at the beautification that we talked about.
Oh, yeah.
Right, so we probably.
Can I give you an update on that?
Yeah, let's do it.
Great. Um, uh, I had a reference for a landscape contractor, um, who's in Southburg. And, uh, got a very good reference on him from someone I trust, my son, who does business with him. Uh, so we asked him to come over and take a look at the site and give us some thoughts about what he had. What he sees there, I think we're pretty good in terms of, uh, giving him some ideas and some direction. Um, we, he, uh, he uses a, uh, a resource to actually develop 3D plans. And so, he, he took our input. He was gonna talk to, uh, this firm that does the 3D plans, had his own information, and they were gonna come up with a plan for this area. Um, we have an opportunity to make three changes, three times, three every times, to make changes to it. So, you know, I can't imagine we want to necessarily exceed that. Uh, small changes like this kind of shrub and that kind of shrub doesn't really matter. Just talking about more significant changes, you know, we want to retain it while we are, we don't. Uh, his quote was?
1,500, roughly 2,000 for the plan, and then he understands that we have to go out to bid for the work.
Yep, so, uh, we engaged him to do that?
How do we do that? How do we go out to the area?
Well, it's, well, we're paying for the plan, because you're, you're gonna have a plan of what you want out there, and then we're gonna give the plan to landscapers to price out the whole project.
Otherwise, you can't do a bid, because they're all gonna come in with different plans and different materials.
We're gonna show them what we want, and they'll give us a price to build just that. So, they're different than, like, building a house.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, so, he's gonna be a couple weeks?
Uh, yep, he actually, I've been communicating with him since Tuesday. Um, he's got already all the plot plans, we've got the insurance, we've got everything going, he's.
What was the name of the firm again? I didn't bring the card. Uh, he knows Will. Will.
RD. RD Outdoor Living.
Outdoor, outdoor living, yeah. So, they're just doing the plan for that. Just very nice, very, you know.
Um, so, that's the status of that item, and, uh, once we have something, we'll share it with Lloyd. Has the sheriff, are they continuing to do special, uh, uh?
Out four blocks?
Yes.
Yes. Um, last time we talked about it, I mean, last year, when we started looking at the extra four blocks, it was towards the end of the fiscal year, and we're looking at different lines that maybe we didn't anticipate a saving. When we talked about it last, I mean, it's, it's early in the fiscal year to know that we, you know, may or may not spend it somewhere. Um, but, I mean, they're happy to do them whenever you are. Maybe next Wednesday, when you're in, you and I can review some lines.
I've got a road I'd like to get on the list.
Okay, well, even if it's not a special, if you email me the li, the road, we can.
I, I will.
Okay, we can get that looked at either way.
We discussed it last time we talked about doing it until Labor Day, right?
That's, that's what I thought.
Through the summer.
Or, or the summer period after, yeah.
The issue is involving, uh, trucks that are hauling material. Is that some you'd rather take care of offline or forest or not?
No, not necessarily.
Okay, fair enough.
I mean, they've all got their warrants. They've all got their warrants, so.
Okay, fine. I just would like it, you know, approved, uh, 'cause I, I had some hot comments about it. Okay.
Um, if I can just add real quick, Ed, for the animal control, um, so Chapley did reach out, and I've spoken to Brandon, they've asked that Brandon, they asked Brandon if he was interested in being their deputy. Their ACO is going to be out of town, uh, for two particular days, so Chapley asked, um, so just in case you see anything posted or anything, he did agree to an hour rate and mileage, um, and will be appointed as their deputy. So, at some point, if the board would like, the full board would like to meet their deputy and talk to Brandon to see if it's something he'd like to do, we can have that conversation. To bring their deputy over here just in case, right?
As backup.
What we don't want is, we just don't want people calling Acton and then calling Chapley if he doesn't answer. You know, it's, the coverage is only as we, you know, so deem it. We want to be careful on advertising those numbers.
Good. Well, I guess that's it for, uh, these updates. Uh, Departmentate Committee, Community Chair updates, Forest Street Conservation Committee.
You're up, Michael.
Going up.
My name is Mike Benjamin. Uh, I live on Peacock Road on Wilson Lake. Uh, we built the house and moved in in 2019, but I've been coming up here since probably 1960. As a summer residence. Uh, last night, as Dan said, we had a meeting, uh, and we had two items that I wanted to bring to your attention. The first is the road ordinance, I mean, I'm sorry, the Conservation Forest Committee ordinance proposed. We based it on the road ordinance, so that it might be easier for adoption or if the lawyer asks to review it, it follows the same format. So, if you have any questions about that, I can answer those.
Yeah, so the board's just getting it, it's in their packet. So, I, I, ideally, we'd like to let them review it, and we can put it on next week's agenda for their comment, um, because they, they did just get it, so, but it's in the packet. Do you want to give them an overview of what it says in that, briefly?
It generally follows the road ordinance, uh, without any, uh, we didn't want any regulatory power at all. This is a, we feel the committee is a, uh, a board that recommends things to you folks, and, uh, and that's the gist of the, uh, the ordinance.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
And the second item, uh, we discussed a parcel of land that's for sale on Wilson Lake, right next to the boat launch. And I have, have to be honest, this is the first time since I've been on, on the committee that we've actually brought something to the, the board. So, I don't know, we didn't know how you wanted it, or what format, or what language, but, uh, the, the gist of the motion that passed was, uh, we would urge the, uh, board to take some action to look into this, uh, because it directly affects the, the existing boat launch. And we based our recommendation on, uh, the goals that we have as a committee and also our mission statement. So, this isn't just something that we, oh, this is a good idea kind of thing. So, we, we're looking at items like this, or hopefully we will, uh, based on our, our goals and mission statements. So, we're not just picking things out of the air. So, the, in the view of the committee, uh, this piece of land is adjacent to the boat launch. I don't know if anybody saw it, but they surveyed it, and the, the corner pin is in the lane of the boat launch. So, uh, it's gonna create some problems down there, it could possibly create some problems down the road. Also, uh, if you look at the boat launch, it goes this way, but straight ahead is an open area that people use for swimming, fishing, uh, and that would probably be eliminated. If the boat launch can't be used by the public, then the state of Maine won't stop the lake and, with fish. And I, if you've ever been over there in the wintertime on a nice sunny Saturday day, there's 20 trucks parked there, all ice fishing. In the summer, there's, there's two or three, four cars parked along that curve, uh, which that shoulder is part of the, the piece for sale. So, it's gonna create, it could create some problems. Uh, if you've been down New Bridge Road, you, you see the fence that is along New Bridge Road, right along Horn Pond, that's a scenario that could be possible. And that would eliminate that roadside parking, uh, causing people to go someplace else, and, um, limit the use of that area for the boat launch.
How far does that stake go into the road, the launch area?
Uh, I would say two or three feet. I have a picture I can show you, but, uh, I actually can't. It's, uh, it's enough so that if somebody put something there, it would be different.
Is that state, is that stake an obstruction to people using the launch today?
No, because it, it has since disappeared.
Sure is.
That was a mistake?
If it was in place, we would have been here using it.
That's fine, that's fine, thank you.
So, yeah, um, I mean, obviously, we, we've known this is for sale, um, there, we, we, I don't know if I really want to get into this, but we, we have some interest in doing the same thing. The board does.
And, and, and again, this is our first time doing it, so, you know, we're, we're kind of feeling this process out, and if this is a, as a side, if this is the process that you were looking for, that's great.
No, I, I think it's perfectly fine for you guys to, you know, to do that, because, uh, actually, at the end of the day, it might help our cause a little bit, you know.
Well, that was, that was the other thought I had.
'Cause we were looking at, we, we didn't want to make it, you know, just between whatever, but we have, you've seen, you know, how much they're asking for. Um, we've looked to see what the assessor thinks it's worth, and, uh, I don't know if there's been a, a formal offer made yet or not, but, um, but we were thinking about doing that. Uh, we didn't want to, you know, be too public and private, we didn't want to get into a bidding war and everything else.
Correct.
But, um, but obviously, this is something that we would have to, uh, you know, go to a town, a special town meeting of some sort. But, um, but I do believe this, uh, this board is interested in, I believe, in the discussion. Uh, so, I think maybe we'll, we'll continue looking into it.
You mentioned you had some goals and a mission statement.
Yes.
Very much tied to your interest in this property. Were those goals, uh, very specific or were they more general, that, that related to this?
Both, I would say.
Well, I, I'd love to see your goals.
I think.
They're in the packet.
Please, and the one that specifically referred to, I believe, is the.
Okay, great, thank you.
Our hope is, uh, that they would end up on the town's website under a tab for the Conservation Forest Committee.
Yeah, if, do you mean the ordinance?
Nope.
No, just goals. I think it strengthens the case for the town to, to pursue the property. That his committee, uh, which is a, is established by an ordinance, had developed goals that are aligned with this purchase, I think that's very good.
Great, awesome.
I don't have a question, but I do just want to recognize, I mean, I've been a liaison for this committee for, like, a year now, and it started off, didn't have enough members. I just want to recognize the work that you've done and the committee has done. Like, this is, I think, a big achievement you folks have done, and I just recommend you and the committee for the work that you've done in kind of bringing this and committee back up and kind of being active in the, the goals that you folks have set, so thank you for the work.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I'll, I'll relay that to the board. Thank you.
Thanks.
Room Commissioner.
Uh, well, anyway, Room Commissioner, I haven't been in a couple of weeks, but I've got some stuff just to update you on. We did the call bits down on, uh, Langley Shores that we talked about, those are all done. I did those, I think, I promised the people a week after the fourth I'd get them done, so I did it a week after the fourth. That's all done. Over there, we cleaned up, going up the hill, all Langley Shores, I just need to, the ditch cleaned up. We fixed the bridge on Sam Warren Road, uh, we got that. Uh, we've been working on some other things. We're getting ready to start the age road on Monday, my special project that got approved for the pavement. We're gonna start there on Monday. Um, I had a meeting two weeks ago with FEMA about the April snowstorm that we had to get some money, and, and do some more paperwork for them, and I'm supposed to have a meeting with them over the fall tomorrow, just not be there, so, um, pretty much I have almost all the paperwork done, and then I'm gonna submit it to them, and I think we have like two or three more meetings we're gonna have with them, and hopefully we can get some money from it, some plan.
Do you have an estimate of that?
Of the money?
Yeah.
Uh, probably anywhere like 50 to 100.
Really?
Yeah, that's what we're shooting for, so, um, you know, they said, you give us everything that was related to the storm and everything, that's what I've been working on. Um, and then I've also had, uh, one of the gentlemen applaud me, Cole Avery's been doing some work for me here and there in town, uh, just trying to help me out here and there, and, um, it's all I, it's all I got right now, so.
That's the individual that brought the, uh, that was the individual doing the flag round.
Yeah, flag round, yeah, okay, good.
Okay. All business. Gore, Gore Palmer, Engineer Committee. Sorry about that. Thank you. So, we, uh, we've invited you here, um, what we're looking for is, uh, why don't you tell me the other one?
Let me skip.
Yeah, why don't you take this?
We've, uh, had a chance to look at your report, and, uh, uh, I thought it had some, some real merit in terms of what our needs might be here in Acton, so we asked you to come today and just talk about, um, what your approach is to doing the assessment of roads. Uh, speaking for myself, uh, I sort of have a financial background, and I want to make sure that we have a, have an understanding of what the long-term obligations are for maintaining our roads, and that we have a systematic way of making sure we have those monies put aside, and we don't end up with a, in a situation where we have deferred maintenance that is a huge number that winds up creating a real strain on taxes or debt or whatever. So, I would like to see something that sort of lays out how much money we should be putting aside. What's the priority in terms of what roads should be addressed? Make sure we're all on the same page about how they should be addressed. What do they require? Do they need to be reclaimed, are there other procedures? And so, personally, I think that would be helpful for the town. That's why we asked you here. So, I saw your report you did on Lebanon, and I thought it was pretty much what I've just described. And, uh, so, it's an opportunity for you to explain to us what you do.
I appreciate the invitation. Uh, my name's Will Haskell, I'm a professional engineer working for Gore Palmer. Been doing this for about 30 years, I guess, a little over, so, uh, we at Gore Palmer have been doing pavement condition studies, uh, throughout the state for a number of years now, um, and I can, I can share with you a document that, uh, I think will do an outline of which communities we've worked for in the past. Lebanon is, is, is one, I guess we did that back in 2018-ish or so. And, um, we've, we've done a number of them, kind of similar size, uh, to Acton. Uh, and we've done some larger ones, we've done some smaller ones. So, uh, every year from the city of Portland, the city of Lewiston, to, uh, I think, the town of Long Island, which has nine miles of road, so, a little bit of that, from, from nine miles to 250 or so. So, we, we've been doing it for a while. So, just wanted to start and give you a brief description. There, there's several different options for doing pavement condition studies. So, what we did in Lebanon is, uh, we used a software package called RSMS.
Yeah.
Uh, Road Surface Maintenance System. Um, so that is, uh, you can purchase that through Maine DOT, uh, Local Road Center. And, um, so that's a, that's a good basic, basic package, I would say, for, uh, for doing a pavement condition study. Uh, allows you to put in the data for, for each road, and, uh, it does some basic calculations and, uh, allows you to do some basic budgeting and things like that. We've also used a package called Paver or Micro Paver. Either one, uh, that's, uh, we can purchase from APWA, American Public Works Association. Uh, there's another entity that sells that, that package as well. A little more rigorous, uh, a little more complicated. The user interface, a little more challenging to use, uh, but it, it actually does a little more for you in the background. It allows you to set up different budgeting scenarios and things like that. So, just a little more rigorous, uh, on the backend than the RSMS system. We can get to the same place with RSMS, we just, we basically do it in a spreadsheet. So, if you, if you look at the Lebanon report, uh, we basically did a, I believe, for Lebanon, we did a 10-year plan, which kind of broke out the roads, what roads should be prioritized, and laid out, um, basically, a list of roadway improvements that met a certain budget amount for each year over, over a 10-year period. We've used that package for, again, a number of, number of towns, uh, where we've been doing Dover Foxcroft. Uh, we did a pavement study for them probably six or eight years ago, and we've been doing, updating their plan almost every year, uh, and helping them put out a, a bid package to contractors to, uh, to kind of do a certain amount of paving, a certain amount of paving work every year for, ever since we did that plan. Uh, Lebanon, I think, has been, I don't know exactly what they've been doing. They, they've probably been doing it on their own, um, so we, we haven't kept working with them over the years after we did the plan, they kind of did it on their own.
Yeah, so, we have that package, and, um, obviously, maybe I have no experience, and I do it with it. But it's, it, it's had some trouble getting traction, and, um, it's interesting, the, you, that package, as I understand it, is, is generally sold to a town for, um, either individuals appointed to a committee or maybe employees using it in the way you've described. So, here you are, using that package as a, as a professional service firm. What's the difference you see between what a town typically can do, given what you would expect kind of expertise we have, versus what you could offer using that?
So, again, that, that package is or was created for, basically, someone in a town with a little bit of experience in, in roadways, to basically go out and do a quick assessment of the roads and put that data into the, uh, into the software, and, um, basically. and basically puts out a condition at the end of the, you know, after you put in the data, it will tell you the road's good, poor, satisfactory, what have you, it was multiple conditions. We found that a lot of towns don't feel like they have the expertise or the capacity to do that, or the time necessarily to do that. So they hired us and, again, for towns with lower mileage of roads, it works out pretty well. When you start getting into that hundred miles of road or even above a hundred miles of road, it's a lot harder for us at the end of the day, after we collect all the data, to kind of break everything out into a spreadsheet and do that manually versus what Paver will do for you is it will tell you, do these roads, you know, and it will give you basically a list of roads. You can modify it, but it will do that kind of organization for you. And it will calculate the cost and do all that and you can manipulate it a little bit in the software. Whereas RSMS is more, you put the data in, it gives you the condition, gives you a little bit of cost data and then you have to kind of manually break it down.
Yep, you know, whenever I get into this subject, I always have to qualify because it's not my background. And so I just have to keep saying that because it is this guy's background and maybe some others.
It's time-consuming to go out and do the data collection?
Well, it's, what I guess I would like to have a better, you know, sense of is when you do a study and you assess the condition, it's not as though you have to wait until the road has failed or at a point. There are certain things that could be done along the way to extend the life of that road. Is that kind of analysis something you bring to the table when you do this work?
Yeah, so when we go out and, again, that condition is a snapshot, snapshot in time. So there's gonna be roads that are failed, in poor condition. There are gonna be roads that you may have recently overlaid that are gonna show as good condition, at least in pavements in good condition. We don't necessarily know exactly what's going on. But, so that's your starting point. And you can kind of predict how those roads are gonna last over the years and you, you know, you work your way through that way. The Paver software gives you an actual numeric value of the condition of the road. So it's called Payment Condition Index. It goes from zero to one hundred. One hundred's a brand-new road, perfect pavement, no cracks, there's no, you know, damage to the road. Zero is a failed road. So that gives you a number, so you get a little bit more information in terms of the condition of the road. You know, there might be a road that's a sixty and there's a road that's a seventy-five and it will, it will tell you, again, based on past experience and the people that created this system, what is the best treatment for that road at that given time. So there's pavement preservation, which is the crack sealing. It might be putting on a fog seal or doing some simple, less costly things like that. And then you move up to heavy shim overlay, light shim overlay, heavy shim overlay, mill and fill is another one, or mill and overlay. Then there's full depth reclamation, like you mentioned, and then there's full depth reconstruction. So it goes from cheap on the preservation side to really expensive on the construction.
So, you know, let's, I know you're doing ten years or you said you did ten years for someone. Let's just talk about five years. It's reasonable to think that we would have a plan, a maintenance plan, covering a five-year period. It would indicate these are the roads that are in the plan. These are the things that ought to be done to those roads. That, of course, is all being done in consultation with a road agent who probably knows more about these roads than most anyone. And it identifies a budget number for that.
So pavement management is really all about, it really starts with pavement preservation. And it's not intuitive to everyone right off the bat in that if you really looked at the Lebanon plan in those early years, we were really focusing on the roads that hadn't failed yet more than the roads that had failed. Because if you focus on the failed roads right up front, you're gonna spend all your money plus more.
You're gonna have some new ones next year.
Right off the bat. And those roads that really need the preservation now are gonna move closer to the failure piece. And once they drop off that cliff or the edge of the curve, then the cost just goes right up through the roof. So we really promote early on or after we do this to really focus on those roads that are in good condition, but you need to do some pavement preservation. You need to go out there and do some crack sealing. You need to go out and maybe do a fog seal or something like that. So they don't fall off that cliff.
You say fog seal, you're talking like a chip seal or something like that?
Chip seal is an option. Fog seal is more like a seal coat, what everybody does. A lot of people do with their driveways and things. But it tends to seal up those kind of really fine cracks that haven't, you know, generated into a crack that you actually go out with a crack seal, lawns and everything and kind of fill them in. So we really focus on that pavement preservation first, which is hard for a lot of people to understand, especially for the people that live on the roads that's in a failed condition. But if you have a relatively long road that is, needs to be reclaimed or needs to be reconstructed, I mean, you can be talking, you know, a million bucks a mile or more just to do that. So it's a big...
Whole reconstruction project you're talking.
So often those projects end up being something that towns have to bond or they have to do it in short chunks over time. But it just takes up all that money and they tend to neglect the pavement preservation roads and then you're right in the same boat with those, five, ten years down the road. They've moved into that situation and you could have preserved...
You'd never make any progress because you're always dealing with high-end costs in a point where...
In Lebanon too, and they had a huge number of roads that were in that, you know, that category of, they were beyond the pavement preservation piece. And once they failed, I mean, you've probably, all probably seen alligator cracking or things where, you know, it looks like chunks of pavement going down the road. You know, it doesn't make any sense to go out there and crack seal that at that point because it's already gone. You're just, you're throwing money at it. So I don't know exactly how many miles of road you have here in town. I thought it was around sixty or so, but I couldn't...
Yeah, right, fifty?
Yeah, Ali, fifty, fifty-two, we were born on, we were around about point sixty.
Is most of that tied?
Oh, yeah, besides, we got the three...
Five miles of minutes, okay. So what are we looking here?
I have a question. So you said for the basic package, part of that would be the purchase of the RSMS. If we already have that program, is that gonna impact the cost of that? Since we're...
The cost of the RSMS software is pretty minimal. I don't know how it is right now, but it used to be three hundred, three hundred dollars or three hundred to five hundred dollars or something like that. In terms of, so the software, you don't even need the software. Well, actually, I think DOT, if we're using RSMS, they want the town to pump it up.
With fifty miles, would that be a suitable software package to use?
I think it would be.
Yeah, okay.
We used RSMS for Lebanon and they were up to a higher end, I think seventy-nine miles or something like that, so.
A hundred miles over there between dirt roads and everything.
And RSMS actually has a section of where you can assess gravel roads too, if you want to include gravel. We did that in Lebanon, actually, we assessed the gravel roads. But gravel roads, it's really just all about maintenance, you know.
I think we've got that like twenty-five, thirty gravel is just fine. Let's figure out how intense we want to get here.
Yeah, we have a majority of that data in RSMS already. I mean, it doesn't produce, it's got different versions because it doesn't produce much of anything for us.
But that's the program that you used for the Lebanon report, right? Is that correct?
RSMS, yes, we use that.
So I kind of see it like, correct me if I'm wrong, I see it like someone going into like Google Drive, somebody who doesn't know the full capacity of the program who hasn't had to use it for a full capacity versus you folks who have used it to like the fullest extent. That's how I kind of view it. I mean, like, we may not know all the tricks to how to put that information and get the information that we want from it. It seems like you folks might because you've been doing this for so long and, or am I...
It's pretty straightforward.
Very basic program.
So the data, the first piece that you do with RSMS is there's, and this is a little bit challenging right now because I actually just was chatting with DOT about it and if I went to them tomorrow and said, I want to use RSMS and I'm starting a project for the town of Acton, there's a basic set of data that they need to provide to me that will put all your roads into that software. So they give you that file and they don't have anybody right now that actually can create that file. They work with us some...
So Don, yeah, we've worked with Don for many years. We have the files, we have all of the data.
So you've got all that data?
And we run numerous reports from it. It does, you know, based on how we manually enter the conditions. So basically, there's three or four categories and they went out and they, you know, they picked four, medium, high on all the different roads. Someone entered it and then it just pops up some reports.
One thing we do a little bit different than RSMS is if you read their manual in terms of collecting the data. So they basically say, drive the road and you just collect the data as you're driving down the road. We, and this is kind of a, we do a little bit of a hybrid between Paver and RSMS. And in the Paver software, we actually go out and depending on the length of the road, we stop and we measure the cracks for a certain square footage of area, depending on the length of the road. If it's a mile-long road, we may measure those in three locations along that section of road. One's at the beginning, one's at the middle, one's at the other end of that road. We'll actually go out and we measure the types of cracks, the lengths of cracks, if they're, you know, transverse cracks or longitudinal cracks along that section. And all that data gets put into the software and that's how they get the pavement conditions index for that section of road. For RSMS, they basically say, you drive the road and you make notes of what you see. We actually go out, when we did RSMS for Lebanon and we didn't stop at three locations along the mile section of road, but we actually stopped and took some measurements just so we were confident in what the condition of that road was. Because driving down the road at twenty-five miles, thirty miles an hour, whatever, I mean, I don't know about you, but I, yeah, for big cracks and alligator crack, you can tell, but it's a lot better, in my opinion, to stop, actually get out and look at those cracks, take pictures, document what you see and then you come back in and you put it in somewhere. So we do a little bit more of an in-depth analysis when we go out and look at the roads than what the RSMS manual would be doing.
Will, did you have anything you wanted to add to this?
No, not at the moment. My only question is, I saw the report you did in Lebanon. Like, was it on each road you guys gave like a number? Was it that you guys gave like a number like paving? Like, was it, you know, maybe like you might reclaim the road, shim and overlay the road? Did you guys spell out most of the projects like...
It was a cost for each road. Now, again, those costs are kind of current year dollars laid out for a five-year period. So you've just gotta remember as you look down five years...
Can you inflate the dollars? Can you inflate the cost?
We can inflate the dollars.
Yeah, you can inflate them, yeah.
You know, a basic inflation rate.
In other words, applying inflation rate.
And RSMS didn't calculate its fees, you put those in there?
RSMS, I believe, has a basic table that you can put in, you know, cost per square foot or a cost per linear foot for some basic unit prices and it will calculate the basic prices. I don't think it inflates it though. So that's where we dump it out into a spreadsheet and do a little more legwork there to give you kind of that five-year or ten-year plan or whatever you want.
You know, putting aside the school department, I think roads are probably the biggest next budget we have.
Roads are, you know... Biggest asset that any, almost any town...
Yeah, biggest asset, for clear. And there's a certain amount that we set aside each year for this kind of work. And I just, I just don't have any idea whether or not that's really adequate. Are we making the problem bigger or smaller over time at that level? I just, I don't have any way of assessing that. And that's only what I'm interested in doing.
Annual paving number that goes to roads?
We just changed it up. We're looking, what's the...
It was three, right? Right between like two fifty and three hundred, right?
No, 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 it's more than that.
I thought it was five.
You mean the whole project or just paving?
All your paving projects.
Oh, yeah, it's probably over five, probably six hundred.
But you're closer to seven. It's three fifty, four hundred, wasn't it?
No, it's two fif, county road's two hundred ninety thousand, major's two hundred fifty thousand.
Okay.
And it sounds like a decent amount for the mile-long roads.
Great.
Well, you saw in my experience with...
Oh, yeah, you've gone from a hundred thousand, six years ago, to that.
So like, I feel, I have a feeling if you drove like the majority of our roads, you know, the last couple of years, the board's gonna give us some good leeway. Like, we've hit it hot the last couple of years. So like, if you go around and like just start to check off roads like eighty percent, you know, eighty, I mean, you're gonna run over a couple of dead-end roads that are in tough shape, but I think the majority of our main roads are in fairly good shape. So like, would you just consider like maybe like crack sealing? Like, if you're riding a lot of roads like in pretty good condition, like what do you do for rewards then? Just kind of give like your observation?
Yeah.
Maybe overlay it another year or something like that? Because I think that's where we're gonna get for the next couple of years. It's like, you know, the roads that we have, we'll kind of step, we'll overlay, you know, take care of the cracks. Like, I guess that's where we're at. Personally, myself, I think that's where we're at with, you know, we've spent a lot of money the last maybe four years on our roads. I think now that we got them there, we're gonna have to start preserving the ones we have now and also the ones we're doing, the work we're doing on the map. I think we're at, you know, a decent place paving. That's my personal opinion as to how a lot of people feel, but I mean, we've been able to use some serious paving the last couple of years, so.
So that's really, in my mind, the benefit of this plan is that it can give you that guidance in terms of when you should start crack sealing. Obviously, it depends on what's happening that you see on the ground. But I mean, typically, you know, you want to start sealing those cracks. You want to have an annual crack sealing program, basically, so.
Charlie.
And that would be, you know, there may only be one or two cracks that show up on a road that you recently paved, but you want to have those, or your crew wants to go out there and crack seal those as soon as you can because the less water that goes into those cracks, the longer that road's gonna last. But there's gonna be some roads out there that need a lot of crack sealing. So if you hire a company to come in and crack seal, okay, we're crack sealing this road, but I've also got a crack that just showed up over on this road. Can you go over and do that too? Just because they want to make sure that there's no water getting into that somewhere. But we can make those recommendations as part of the report.
Do you do like a condition index with this?
So RSMS, as I said, doesn't do the number. It's a word, basically, so we...
But your other, the other program you mentioned does do a condition index?
The Paver program gives you a number of pavement condition.
So is there a standard you would recommend that a town maintain for a condition index overall?
Yeah, so it's, basically there's, and I didn't bring a copy of it with me, but there's a color-coded chart that basically gives you ranges from, you know, certain number to certain number.
They go from zero to a hundred, right?
Goes from zero to a hundred. Goes from zero to a hundred.
And, and do you want to be in a fifteen or a twenty? Is that typically where you want to be?
Yeah, you want to be higher than that.
You want to be higher than, um, um, the lower the number the better?
Higher the number.
Okay, I'm just calculating the other way.
Seventies or eighties is where you really like to be. And we've done this for some towns, town of Wyndham for example. We've done a pavement condition study for them, basically every three years for six, six rounds, I believe, we've done for them. And it's, it's pretty impressive to see how they've improved the condition of their roads, the pavement condition index of their roads over that period of time period. They've, they've gone from, you know, very poor condition when we started and now the pavement, the average pavement condition index of their roads is really awesome.
Okay, well, I mean, there's something we probably ought to be discussing. I don't think we made a decision on this tonight, but we appreciate you coming in and, uh...
I have just one more question.
Okay, go ahead.
That's all right. Um, if you guys, when you guys ride your roads, do you, do you like, if you take like a long piece of road, that might be five, six miles, do you chunk it up or do you just grade the whole road per, you know, the whole six miles or do you cut it off in chunks? Or how would you guys grade the roads?
It depends, uh, depends on a number of things. A lot of times, um, we'll chunk it up in from intersections. Uh, other times, if there's, if there's a change in the road, like the width of the road changes or there is something else that changes, we'll create a separate section for the narrower section and then another section, another segment for the, for the wider section. So that width is something that we always look at too because if you don't and you put that whole thing in there and you go from a twenty-four foot wide road with no shoulders to a twenty-four foot wide road with three foot shoulders on either side, the software's going to give you a wrong number if you're, if you're calculating costs because you've gone from a narrow road to a wider road. So we chunk those up into, into segments. I'll just leave these with you, I didn't know exactly what we're going to be talking about tonight. So there's, there's a little bit of everything in this packet, but I think I've got six of them here.
Great, thank you, appreciate it much.
You guys got any questions?
Nope.
Well, thank you.
All right.
Thanks for coming in.
You're welcome.
Road bridge.
Tom, you're up. Uh, Will Langley, and, uh, so this year, I think it's March, we got the new bridge reports in. And, uh, we got it in, I looked at it and then finally a week later I got a letter from the state. It's not like a bat, but like they, they just put in some bullets of, you know, things that we should be looking at, you know, road bridge. If you're looking at like the concrete starting to break off on the walls and all the tops and everything. And so I called the guy up from the state, Paul, yeah, Paul Taylor. I talked to him about this and that, I'm like, well, you know, who, who do you guys use? Because the, the problem running into is like there's a lot of problems underneath now. And he's like, well, you know, call this company. So I, I called the company, they're like pulling it over. I sent them the bridge report over, they looked at it and they gave you a number that was pretty shocking. So, um, you know, we were like up around like fifty, sixty thousand dollars to fix these patches on the bridge. And he explained to me why, you know, why they're that much money. And I understand, you know, all, all the concrete that's broken off on the bottom of the bridge and they'd have to...
These are the railings you got?
Yeah, the railings, and also underneath the bridge deck, there's pieces missing. Not of the, on the sides, like there's like concrete walls kind of that they're missing there. There's some issues under the bottom and, uh, you know, he explained to me why it'd be so much money and this and that. And, uh, you know, it's, it's not like it's material, it's, it's time, lots. They got to put stage in on it, they can't get in the water, you got to put stage in on the bridge, they got to form it and this and that. And then, uh, when he told me that number, I was like, oh, I'm going to have to come up here and talk to you guys because I mean, I don't know.
Can the bridge stay open?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, while they're working on it?
Oh, yeah, I told, I told him, it's, you know, the bridge, you know, they, they do their own traffic control and everything like that. That was in the price and whatnot, but when he told me that price, I was like, well, I got to come up here and...
What was the number again?
Uh, it was fifty-five, um...
Do you have a report from them or an estimate?
Yeah, I do. Sent it to you if you wanted to.
So they could see?
So I was like, well, I'm going to have to talk to my board about this.
Sounds like structurally the bridge itself is fine.
Yeah, it's all right.
I don't really know what to think about, but, uh...
Yeah, the gentleman, you know, it, it's, it's all right right now. He's like, you know, before I come up two years ago, you know, you know, if we don't get these issues fixed, it could, you know, affect your, you know, our efficiency rate they give us. And I'm like, well, you know...
Which isn't very good right now.
No, and, and that's the thing, I'm like, I don't really know if throwing sixty grand at it's the right idea. I mean, before I went, didn't, it wasn't, like, I should probably come up here and talk to it with you guys, so.
What would the alternative be?
Do I want to do it done?
Nothing.
Just, I can go down there and patch up the sides, you know, whatnot, I don't, or we just leave it till the day comes that we do something with it. You know, I just didn't think throwing sixty grand at it was the right idea, but I, I don't know.
Did you give your life or...
I mean, I got the gentleman from the, from the company, they, all this is just a big, just a big repair, you know, just a buy us some time. He's like, oh, they do it a lot for the state, so you get it five, ten years out of it, but, you know, just, it's just one of them.
Are we then looking at a possible replacement?
Uh, I'd say by then, you know, the state's probably going to send us a letter saying that we should shut the bridge down, which that's totally up to us to shut the bridge down at that point. You know, I, I could see it coming the next couple of years, you know. This is why the gentleman's like, well, I sent you this other letter to maybe get the ball rolling. If you guys want to do, or you want to do repairs on the bridge, you know, just, he said, you know, buy us some more time. He, he understands that there's no...
I, I assume doing that, that repair work isn't going to really extend the, the life of the bridge.
No, it's just...
Because that's a more structural issue, the bridge overall.
Yeah, it's, it really ought to keep like, like when I talked to the gentleman from my company, he's like, oh, you're really doing yourself? He's like, we do it all the time in towns, it's, they're just buying themselves time. It's all, it's all coming down to it. When I saw that number, I was like, I don't really know.
So I, I guess for me, I'd like to know what the, what the reasonable life of the bridge is. If we're looking at fifty grand today and we're looking at a replacement in three to five years, I don't know that I'd spend the money. I think I, you know, I would consider just replacing the bridge. Is that what you're thinking too?
Well, that's where I was like, why, if we throw, I think of it, you know, it's ten grand a year, you know, like it's six years, right? You know, roughly, you know, I, I don't really know. You know, I, this, I, we've been talking about road bridge for years, but...
So Joe Luterno had the one side redone, remember, the relative one side?
Pat Stevens did it.
Pat Stevens did, yeah. I, I do think we really ought to at least do the other side. The one rebound sticking out.
I think it's looking worse than you...
It's coincidental.
I don't, I don't feel spending sixty thousand dollars on a facelift on the...
I was going to say, it sounds more aesthetic than it does structural.
Well, I, when I got, well, I mean, I got it, I got the company, I mean, like I said, it's, it's, it's time. It's, I mean, like I said, they got to set stage, they can't get in the water, you got to set stage enough, you got to set their form enough. I mean, it's, it's good, I mean, the stuff is legit, it's all they do, you know, they, it's legit bridge repair, you know, it's, it's just time.
I guess I'm more interested in understanding what's going to happen in three to five years. If that got a life of, maybe I got it wrong, but let's say five years. When we talked about this before, and I think we got it from the state guy, the, um, the entrance and exit to that bridge probably would have to be redone because it doesn't need code because of that bend in the road.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we had a plan, what, like ten years ago, wasn't it? We had a plan.
Both seven, both seven, like being...
You know what I'm talking about?
Being construction.
Yeah.
Didn't that other...
It's a little bit of a much more expensive project.
Oh, yeah.
Kind of straighten that curve out.
Right, I, I didn't get to that about with the guy, but even, you know, like he said, he, he understands the particular grid. He deals with it every day, you know, and I'm just like, you know, I just don't want it to become an issue, so I was like, you know, he's like...
So you do what you're supposed to do. You inquire, you're looking for, uh, you know, advantage because it's a big boo-boo. And, uh, we just got to figure out whether or not, um, if, whether or not spending fifty-five, sixty thousand dollars to get us the next three years, um, if it's not structural, if it's just a cosmetic, is it just something we can do right now, um, like the guardrail and some other stuff there just to suffice until we figure it out?
Yeah, I think definitely when you come around the corner going to Dan for that side right there, I could use some work.
The right hand side, yeah.
Right hand side, I mean, like I said, getting under the bridge is, you know, I, you know, it's a big, that's why the guy said, you know, that you, they put stage in on the bridge, they can walk underneath it. I mean, like I said, that's where the number came in, it's just, pretty much just timing, so, you know, you know what I mean? So, um, yeah, I can get the front of it, you know, working on, I could, and whatnot.
And can, can we see, probably a good idea if we could see the price and what he was going to do so we have a better idea of exactly what we're...
Jen, she says to you guys, I mean...
Because I mean, if we look at it and say, wow, you know, this is a lot of work, maybe this is something different, you know, but without actually seeing the actual bid.
Right, I mean, like I said, I just wanted to come talk to you guys about tonight and I can send it to you, we can go over there. And when I saw the number, I was like, oh.
Is, is it, is it feasible to think we could get an assessment of the, of the life of the bridge?
Well, I think to give that, that's what the bridge report is.
Yeah, I mean, I...
That's the assessment of the bridge.
Does it say what the life is?
Yeah, yeah, you know, I...
Don't you guys...
The remaining life.
I...
Yeah, I feel like it's on one of the first pages.
Yeah, yeah, but it's, I mean, it's four, five pages, I mean, do you guys see the bridge reports?
Yes.
Yeah.
I haven't seen that, I haven't seen that one.
But I, I think I saw one from two years ago. But will it say this has an estimated useful life of five years?
I think it, I don't know if it's worded like that, I mean, there's a lot of small text in there, in life, but I mean, it gives us...
I don't recall seeing that in those reports.
So, I mean, it gives us this, the sufficiency rating and I, I mean, it's pretty low. And that's what the guy from the state said, you know, another...
I, I guess what I'm getting at is if, if we had an assessment of an estimated life of the bridge, then I think that's useful to understand whether it's worthwhile to spend money patching this up or should we kind of, you know, put through a plan to, over the next two or three years, try to find a way of doing it correctly?
And I didn't, when I talked to the gentleman from, when I talked to Jen, he said he'll come out him personally and he'll go over the report with me. And I mean, that's, this guy was the one that writes it, not, not Jim Foster, not the, not the guy that came, um, to the road committee. This, this gentleman, Rob Taylor's his name, he said, I'll come out and we'll work at the bridge and, or he says, I, sometimes he comes out and looks at them and I can start there and we'll work back together.
Is that the bridge we got the quote on when we replaced the other one? We got a quote to replace that from the same company?
Oh, okay.
Bean, is that the one that he gave us a quote on?
I did, I don't remember.
He did give us a quote on it.
He gave us a quote on one of the other bridges in town, that was several years ago.
Yeah, I have to do that one, he gave us a quote on the one down there, but, uh, we were worried about the land and the corner and this and that, so. Uh, he did give us a quote.
I feel like, yeah, I feel like that's one. So why don't you send me that report?
Consider the current code, what would be declared?
Yeah.
Okay.
If he sends that, I'll pull the report, see if the, um, actual life expectancy's on there. We'll pull Mr. Bean's report, maybe we can revisit and we can...
We need a new bridge.
Yeah, I'm thinking that...
It's just a matter of time.
It must be that long.
It's going to be fifteen years or it's going to be...
Spit on the H- and they would follow the problem.
Well, spit on the H is part of the problem.
They got it out, I don't know how many years.
Yeah, well, that, that was the problem. I think the H had, well, like eight, nine years or something.
Oh, it was like in the twenty, twenty, thirty something.
Yeah, it's like eight, nine, ten years.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, so I mean, do we take the brunt of the hit or...
There must be a, a procedure for dealing with a bridge that is at state lines. There must be, the states must have figured out how to come together and deal with it.
I think so.
Or are they just kind of, the, the Mexico standoff?
They didn't last, we, we never standoffed. Didn't we beat with the border select one over there and we started...
No, we haven't, that wasn't yet.
Not with, not with Milton.
We did with Wakefield.
Wakefield, that's what lasted.
But we haven't with Milton. But Milton, problem, Milton is, is us, I don't know, I talked to him back when I was road commissioner and I thought maybe Adam had, I think it was, so, I mean, maybe it was Adam, but all I know is they had certain bridges that were already in line.
Yes, I understand.
They wasn't in the line.
They were waiting for funding to the state, it took so many years to do this and that.
Way out, yeah.
So, um...
Maybe it's been, it's been back to the top.
I mean, my suggestion on that bridge right now, the, the bridge, when I had the bridge, Mr. Foster came down and looked at it with me. Nothing wrong with the bridge, we just got to do some maintenance to it. Uh, some patches, he had a little scouring down below, the rid, the side rails are bad.
Well, that's what I think.
So maybe this isn't such a bad idea.
Well, I mean, does this take care of the guardrails and all that?
Yeah, well, yeah, his price was the, I told him I'd do the guardrail, I just wanted him to do the bridge. I would get a guardrail and I told him, just take care of it, just give me the number. Because in my head I was thinking, oh, maybe twenty, twenty-five million, and then he said, not to exceed like fifty-five, I was like, oh.
Well, we, we probably ought to see the, uh...
Yeah, we got to see the paperwork.
Yeah, I'm not, I'll send it to Jen, she can work, she got it and not, we'll go over there, so.
I'll pull up any of the guys, that's all we have on.
Beautiful, well, appreciate you doing that.
He's the next item.
Yes, you are, Tree Services.
So Will and I talked today, uh, we were just reviewing, uh, the last time we, we looked at some of the different companies with, uh, Tree Services and he's been having some, uh, trouble getting, not trouble, this time of year, people are busy. Um, so we have the, originally we had prices from CTI, which was seventeen hundred dollars a day. We have Irving, that was at twenty-eight hundred dollars a day. But we have found, um, Fall Tree Service in the middle at only two thousand dollars a day. They're licensed, I'm sure they've got, maybe work for Sanford, for, um, Berwick. So I think Will was just looking for permission because CTI is very busy right now to bring in, um, Fall Tree, you know, as needed.
Now, that's the problem with putting this up the bid, is these, these companies work for every municipal area. They always got the most money to spend on that route, you know, and so, uh, little guys like, little efficiency like us, we, uh, have to look elsewhere. So we should have at least two. I thought, I thought we did last time.
Well, you did, there was a backup.
It was just CTI.
But Irving's, they've gone up and, um, we've got some good recommendations of, from Fall, so.
So, I mean, I would make the recommendation that you still, CTI...
Impossible, yeah.
What's it?
It's all free service.
All road.
All of them, yeah.
All road?
Yeah.
They do some flowering.
You need something done and they can't do it and it's going to give you...
Yeah, and they have time to work now, right? Isn't that what you said?
Yeah, he's, he can fit me in and write off, you know, he's got some open time, so.
You guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Make sure we're in insurance and all that before we start.
I'm going to call...
Okay, Sebega Timex, parking lot.
Okay, so, um, from the board's instruction, we have an updated contract from Sabeado. It is seventy-five hundred dollars for the survey and they want an additional eighteen hundred for subsurface utility allowance.
How much for that?
Eighteen hundred. So I got clarification, you may know what it is, but I wanted clarification. So he said the eighteen hundred is to contract with a subsurface utility locating company. They have special equipment that they can locate any underground utility pipes. They mark off the location of the pipes and Sabeado's survey field crew will, will put the markings and will be included on the plan. We need that? I mean, if we're having a survey, do we care what's on over there? We're just looking at property value.
I just want property boundaries, I'm not worried about...
Are there any utilities near that?
Well, you got water lines and stuff.
Yeah.
They're not even going to find them anyways, but, um...
But the survey is seventy-five hundred and that would come out of the parking lot fund that, right?
You got to have it done.
It's a start for me.
Yeah. Is that for the whole municipal complex?
Yes.
This, yeah.
Thirty-five inch. Yeah, please.
I figured it was a start for me.
Yeah.
The only way to tell you know what you're rubbing on it is...
So you, uh, signature's here?
Oh, motion.
I make a motion to accept, uh, Sebega Timex twice of seventy-five hundred dollars, only the seventy-five hundred dollars for the, uh, survey for the, uh, Town Hall complex.
Second.
All up there? Okay, I confused myself, I never made the motion. Wait for a second.
We all sign down here if we have to.
Majority, please.
We have a Skidsteer bid.
Okay, so, uh, Rob was in today and, uh, we called David and he helped us put this together. So first reading, the town of Acton is currently accepting bids for a brand-new Skidsteer equivalent to a Long Bear three seventeen G. The chosen Skidsteer must have the following, a closed, that should be enclosed, or a closed cab, enclosed cab with air conditioning and heat, minimum lift capacity of two thousand pounds, foam-filled rubber tires or its equivalent... and heat, minimum lift capacity of two thousand pounds, foam-filled rubber tires or its equivalent, front-end loading bucket, six feet forks, six, six-foot forks, uh, detailed warranty, um, sealed bits, and basically goes through October twenty-eighth, I'm sorry, August, August, I'm in the wrong month, August twenty-eighth, um, does that look like David, everything that we're talking about?
Yeah, just change that to a closed cab.
Yeah, that's right.
Dave, you wanna add, who we talked about?
So, for, and I were talking before, um, everybody showed up, and, um, I asked Robert whether or not we ought to have a snow pusher, when you buy this stuff, you're gonna buy it in a package deal, you're gonna get a much better deal now than if you wanted to go later, and he said, and he had, and he said, well, I got a snow bucket, dah 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 dah, but, uh, typically, you know, that would be something...
As long, yeah, the length of that packing lot out there, a snow pusher would be much better.
That, and falling down in the dirt area, you know, they work better, so, I myself wouldn't want to include that, I think, I mean...
This is snow bucket, is what it's called?
This is snow pusher.
Eight, what, eight foot?
Foot snow pusher.
Eight foot, no...
I, I think at the end of the day, it's just a good thing to have, if we're gonna do it, this'll be the time to do it.
And this could be newer used?
So, I didn't, I didn't put the newer used because I wasn't sure how to do that, with, with, with the municipality bid, you don't typically do use, so, I haven't, I haven't really, uh...
Yeah, I don't know.
And Dave, that we're gonna look at the prices and see how bad...
Is this being sent to dealers?
Yes.
Well, let's do this, let's see what we get for new prices, and if it's way out of the ballpark, then we can start looking for used, you know, they're that...
But the dealers will likely have used that they would...
But they don't typically put those off the bid, you bid on them, that's all, you don't use the equipment, so, on new equipment, you're gonna get, uh, you know, you're gonna get the best deal by buying new.
Yeah.
They're gonna give you the best price, if he comes in and say, uh, say one of these companies, you know, the, all these companies come in at sixty, seventy thousand dollars, something that we buy something for thirty-two thousand new with a couple hundred hours on it, um, but, I didn't wanna do, I didn't wanna confuse the process.
It's hard to compare.
Yeah, you can't compare, you're sitting there...
It's hard, it's hard to do that.
It's hard to compare two used.
Right, because they have hours, something...
I think we're probably gonna end up with new, given this approach.
Well, I think we can look at the price and see, you know, I look through my phone, I got all the machinery trader magazines, you know, I mean, that's my bible, you know.
I was, I guess I was thinking you would find a used one through a dealer, then you would warranty it and service it, and, um, as opposed to buying something, uh, you know, secondhand or...
But if you could buy that, if you could, if you could buy a brand-new one for another ten thousand dollars...
Yeah, it's fine.
Then it'd be better.
Or if it's another twenty, then, you know, we got something to think about.
Well, that, that's why, I, I, instead of confusing, you know, I, let's go this route, we see those numbers, and if they don't drive...
As long as we get to consider them, that's all I...
Yeah, no, no, I, I'm really...
If you think we're gonna get there, that's fine, I trust, I trust your...
Yeah, I just, I just...
I think you gotta get a, a warranty and a lot more...
Well, that's, that's one thing I'm worried about, it's the warranty, because the problem you have now with all this new equipment, and I've been lucky, I don't have anything yet that has death fluid, I've been buying equipment...
This skid steer, this skid steer is going to...
DF, it's, it's, uh, liquid fertilizer they put in it, emissions, and it's, it's liquid fertilizer, that's what it is.
Right, but this guaranteed is gonna happen, huh?
It's, no doubt.
Yeah.
A ninety-nine percent chance it's gonna happen.
In a highly computerized, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we...
So, you're, you're looking at warranties are a really big deal when you're...
Especially with the regens and...
So, let's see when they come in new, and if they look crazy, we can still start looking for used, so...
Okay, all right, so I'll make those couple changes and get advertised.
Do we have access to the lease machine for, is there any time period that we'll expire?
Uh, so we just, we just, um, did it for another month, so, um, which brings us through, uh, September, middle of September, so I'll reach out to them again for the third month.
So it's available to extend again if we need to?
So far, we've done two months, they've been very good to us, so, I'll, maybe contact them after here.
Awesome, okay, brush removal, please.
All right, so, uh, Town of Acton is currently accepting bids for brush removal and chipping at the Acton transportation, uh, for bidding purposes, bidders can view the brush pile by contacting the transportation superintendent during business hours, I mean, this one's pretty, pretty basic because they just have to go out, look at the pile, and they've got the date to submit, um, we said the chipping and removal.
Yeah, I didn't wanna put a yardage or an estimating...
You're gonna add to it every day.
Every, well, that, and every single one that'll come in says it's a different size pile, and...
So you're just gonna get a quote on what they see?
Yeah, they, you'll look at it.
Give them, they tell us what it is, and be gone with it.
Okay, so you wanna motion on this?
Uh, no, I'm gonna get, just gonna advertise, I'm gonna, I wanna make sure you're okay with this.
Yep.
Resignation.
Uh, last Wednesday, I seen by now, because we did, um, make a posting about it, the board of selectmen received a resignation from the recreation director of Samantha Singleton, and that was effective immediately. So, motion to accept?
Motion to accept, uh, resignation of the recreation director.
Second, all in favor?
Okay, so, uh, with that resignation, it becomes a job posting, Dan, did you have a chance to look that over?
I, I did, um, I did some...
Did some changes to it?
Yeah, oh, just some thoughts or questions, I guess.
So...
Um, I guess one of the things was just like, um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, an eighth, um, bullet point down, we have community kick to town administration, the median needs and times, private town policy, uh, I figured maybe one of the recreation committee in there.
Where are you at? Oh, so, I'm...
Oh, what are we looking at?
The job posting.
Oh, the job.
Not the, not the, so the job description, the board can work on that while we're advertising for the position, but you look at this one?
Yes, I did see the posting, um, my question is, is it a common practice for, in the posting, or is it gonna be more the job description to have, kind of like the hours, and, uh...
Well, it says that the position is a site-in position and the ability to work buried schedules to include evenings and weekends, depending on the season, is a must, I mean, there's no set hours for this position, you know, they could work, you know, they can choose to sort out the teams in the evenings, in the day, I mean, there's really no set hours.
That's the perk of it.
I mean, we could say that we estimate it to be approximately ten hours a week.
I mean, I guess my only thing with that is that, like, we said they could sit there, I, it would be nice to have like a minimum expectation, like no less than so many hours, but the rest you can...
How's that work when there's no sports going on? It's a site-in position, they get figured out, so I think, but even if they're gray like it is right now, it gives them more, uh, flexibility, if they put a little bit more time in, fine, if they put less time in, nobody's questioning them, right?
Yeah.
Works as long as the job's getting done, that's all that's ever...
That's the requirement.
Yeah.
Right?
Get the job done.
So, do the rest of the board have a chance to look at this, just real quickly, uh, the Town of Acton is currently accepting resumes of the recreation director, the position reports the town administrator and select board, and is responsible for the management and leadership of the rec department, and the seasonal temporary volunteers, uh, candidates must demonstrate strong leadership and management skills while demonstrating knowledge of the fundamentals and accepted practices and the recreational operations administration organization, judging team building and social media, position is a site-in position, the ability to work, which is read, and then just ask for the resume and the references by the twenty-eighth of August, just basic, um...
Good debate.
Yep, that's, is this gonna be, place in an ad in the paper?
Yes.
It is, I, I've noticed in the ads, uh, they generally require references to be submitted, you know, that can be an impediment for some people, I mean, typically you ask for the references once, you, you narrow it down to one or two people, so, I would just take that out.
All right, so complete the resume, tell them that, okay, anything else? I think this is a good time, too, since we're talking about it, to, um, thank Hope and John, and again, put it out on the table, that, um, Hope and John was a step forward with a lot of other volunteers to take over the, um, soccer season, and they're doing this at zero compensation, um, and they have taken over soccer, they're getting everything organized, they're gonna make sure the kids get out there and play, we've got all the coaches lined up, we've got, uh, kind of the collins are helping with the snack check, there are lots of people that are coming together at short notice to make this happen, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
All right, get that advertised, and lots of things coming through on the twenty-eighth of August.
Okay, we're gonna move into executive session, motion.
I move that we move into executive session, MRSA four oh five six A one dash personnel at seven twenty-one P M.
Second. All in favor? Hey, do I hear a motion?
I move that we come out of executive session, MRSA four oh five six A one dash personnel at seven thirty-one P M.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Without direct technology. You like me to take this?
Yep.
Okay, great, uh, the first thing is to, uh, uh, make a motion to combine, uh, three activities into a single position, the APAC director, APAC director, excuse me, um, the website, um, maintenance, and IT support, each of those are three separate functions and budgeted separately today, uh, as we've done the search for this position, it makes a great deal of sense for us to combine them all into one position and call, and title that the Director of Technology, we have the, uh, it's, from a budget perspective, we're simply trying to get a three budget lines into one line, uh, but I, I think, given, uh, the next item I'll make a motion on, it would become clear what's going on, so, but, I would like to make a motion to combine the APAC director, website maintenance, and IT support, uh, functions into a single position entitled Director of Technology.
Second, all in favor?
We have, uh, I had an opportunity to meet with a candidate today, uh, that's Dan Crapitz, he, uh, is well-known to the town, has been serving as the website director and doing IT support as well, um, and, uh, more recently as the, as the APAC director.
Trump.
And, uh, APAC director, uh, I had an opportunity to meet with Dan, we use credentials, they're quite frankly, very impressive, the guy's got a terrific background, um, I think everyone I've come in contact has spoken very highly about him, he's, he's well-regarded, uh, pleasure to work with, and does excellent work, um, we've, uh, been able to negotiate compensation with him, and, uh, I would like to make a recommendation that, uh, that we appoint Dan to the position of Director of Technology effective...
Immediately.
Immediately, second.
All in favor?
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Okay, just gonna go to call the caller, need color?
Hey, Joyce Faxon, um, on, I think it was What's Up in Acton, I read there's going to be a, I believe it was called a Bonn Yard Bash on Goose Pond Road, I believe that's the, um, haunted house location, and I just was wondering if it was a, uh, you know, a mass gathering thing or something, because parking at Halloween or driving down, um, Goose Pond Road is, it's like bumper cars, people cars, and trying to get through is a mess, so I was wondering if there's anything you're aware of?
Yeah, so, they, um, they've been doing this for several years now, I've seen it advertised and while they've done it for several years, they've never come before the town for mass gathering, which tells me that they fall, you know, hopefully within the requirement, but I've also not heard any complaints from, um, from anybody in regards to the event, but the town hasn't been notified at all.
Yeah, it was just, um, come Halloween time, I would absolutely say there's a parking problem, and I would bring that forward then.
They do play it pretty good, but, I just thought about this, I mean, someone does something, now I'm asking everyone, what's the ramification, what can we do on it?
Right, I mean, they're, you know, the way that it's written, because it's extremely old, I mean, they're, you know, um, you know, short of asking, you know, asking them to leave or lower the number, I mean, there's, you know, you don't have a lot of authority...
What is the minimum, or the maximum number?
Uh, it's what, two hundred and fifty right now, two fifty, two hundred and fifty, right, I mean, it's, you know, private event, no different than a wedding or something or a funeral.
We, we do stuff for that, too.
What, well, I mean, if they're less than two hundred and fifty, we don't generally lease it, if they don't come to us, you know, we don't, you know, unless the board is concerned with a possible parking issue, you know, and you can certainly say that, someone brought it to your attention, but I don't know if...
See, what we'll do is a letter check, or, or, if, if, you know, we need to address a major issue, then we'll, we'll...
We'll make sure he's aware of the event.
There's one other thing I, I would like to probably know about, Ed probably knows it, um, sometime last week, uh, a young fellow here in Acton was doing some work at home, and he was using a tool, I believe it was a welding tool of some sort, and he had a very bad accident, and got hit in the face with it, he was home alone, I mean, and he absolutely panicked, didn't, just, you know, shocked, he ran out into the road, uh, which